Hi, how are you? Generalizations or additions?
Yes, thank you. Can be the UC SO contract renewal? If we can postpone that, we'll... Next meeting.
Anything else? There's no other further questions? We're considering there is a widening of postponement?
Yeah. We don't have the financials done on it. The attorney has had a chance to look at it. She asked me to do that.
Okay. There's no other further additions or additions. I think the motion will put the agenda down. Mr. Boyes made the motion, all in favor. That would be unanimous, motion passed. Presentation, we have to go back to our citizen of the quarter for the second quarter, for Michelle Reese. We had wonderful things to say about you last time. You're just gonna have to go right because I'm listening to you. But to summarize, Michelle did start the Adopt a Cop program. Mr. Cohn, do you want to elaborate real quick?
Yeah, you're doing a good job.
Okay. And continues to work tirelessly for our community. So, we're gonna do her the same honor as the others and invite her up here to receive her award and take uncomfortable pictures.
And she also has done a lot of good things for the community other than the Adopt a Cop. Just recently, Michelle went to one of the nursing homes, I guess it's Assistant Living's right outside of Indian Trail, right on the border. They had a prom night where the mayor contributed and some other people came down and they had a prom. And Mr. Daniels, not Mr. Evans, I don't know if he's doing that. Mr. Evans.
Your voice wasn't good, man.
I could make both of them bad. I think I'm at home. Anyway, he emceed it and like a lot of things that he does in town, he did it all for the goodness of his heart, so did Michelle. And I'm telling you, you know, people have good hearts and this is what this ward's about, not only Adopt a Cop. And one other thing, we did Adopt a Cop. The Adopt a Cop was originally started out to do just the... And I don't like calling cops the officers in Indian Trail, which I think there's 27 of them and may have been 30 some with the staff. But Michelle ended up getting to do, I think it was 300, every sheriff's deputy in the town, excuse me, in the county. So, I mean, that's going a step beyond on a lot of things. But we appreciate you and thank you for all the things that you do for the town.
That brings us to public comments. As a reminder, these proceedings are recorded, accessible like anyone in the public. If you're feeling civil in language and audience as well as council, please allow the person their respect for their three minutes and you are allowed just three minutes. So, I'd rather rely on someone else to increase their time. So, that being said, we'll... Mike Ed. Could you just state your name?
Mike Ed, 2105 Montana Boulevard. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak. Just want to bring up something that I discovered yesterday. Axel lost my job yesterday. And it was actually caused by a couple of people here. And I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. And come to find out, my grandson had to tell me about it because he brought this home. I'd just like to read this in. And it reads this. New this year and especially important for parents to bring their children to school each morning, right turn only out of the school has been eliminated. A traffic director has been hired to direct traffic, but only for the morning when we experience our heaviest traffic. The traffic director will be located in the middle of the intersection, so I ask that you watch out for her direction and keep her safety a priority. I look forward to seeing all of you very soon. Sincerely, Scott Broom. He's the principal of Poplin. Now, the job that I lost was really caused by two individuals and that's Mayor Pro Tem David Cohn and Captain Cohn. And they went to the Board of Education and got the Board of Education to do this for us. So, and I was, so everybody knows, I was kind of the traffic monitor. I didn't get paid, but it was a thankless job, but I really wanted to bring forward the two people that brought this. I've been up here several times to speak about it and there's probably 15, 1600 people so far. People not only of Bonterra, but people of Anandale who always has the U-turns, that's being eliminated. And so, we appreciate the work that the mayor did, Mayor Pro Tem, and Captain did. And thank you.
Michael Faulk, very familiar circle, excuse my voice, a little bit cold. In regards to the Sun Valley Marketplace, trade location for a hotel, Mr. Moser did say it has been planned for several years. We have a hotel near Loews, next to how we said before. So, that being said, why was there an effort to put a hotel at Sun Valley Commons when there's not enough property there to begin with? Special committee meeting made forth to help Mr. Moser to address that situation. Also, UC SO contract renewal, make sure all the council members are involved in the process this time. And also, if they have any questions, make sure they address those questions and concerns to an open discussion. Opening our road widening, Lieutenant Matthews and Stallings both have voiced their displeasure concerning super streets. Indian Trail has $10 million on the table for this project. Indian Trail has scratched the back of NCDOT. It's time for the NCDOT to scratch our backs instead of status in the backs, their super street concept. Indian Trail should have a loud voice concerning this issue. I am glad Mr. Cohn brought up during the last council meeting, you learn from the past and try not to repeat it. Good advice. Just like Mr. Cohn with a few other council members approving to get a loan to purchase 147 acres of land for $1.2 million, I don't recall there being a public caring or public input for that expense since at the time, there was no talk of having another part bond in 2012. No public caring also with the tax increase in which Mr. Cohn voted to approve. Mr. Rondell, former council member, did mention that in his comments at the council meeting. Mr. Daniels did however say on the Sun Valley High School stage in 2013 during the candidate form, "At this time, I would not vote for a new town hall." He did say that, I was on the stage and said it. However, he did say "at this time," which means "at that time." He changed his mind, evidently he did. Well, witness that. But just as Mr. Cohn campaigned in 2011, he was not gonna have a tax increase. Watch the video for that candidate form, please. It's linked to us on the Hornets Desk Facebook page. I am disappointed in three council members and a mayor this time. To have two friends appointed on council within five months is not ethical. It's not ethical, Paul. I have respect for Mr. Evans and Ms. Howe, but because I know the two of you so well, along with Mr. Cohn and Ms. Alvarez, if former council members Darlene Luther and Robert Allen had done the same thing, it would have been a huge outcry. You know it would be. I would be up here complaining about it then too. Same thing with Mr. Daniels and Mrs. Boyes would have put the two council members up there. I would be up here addressing it. Gotta be careful in how you do it. Perception is a strong, strong emotion, okay? You gotta be careful what you do and how you present yourselves. Also, as for Mr. Cohn saying I had lied about the carpool attendance for the town of Indian Trail, in the last six years, Mayor Alvarez has only attended at most five meetings. Carpool meetings, MPO meetings, he's either as the alternate or as the designated delegate. Five meetings in six years. Ms. Howe did attend meetings by sitting in the audience at first, which means she cannot participate in discussions nor case she vote. Only till a few weeks ago, she asked me to become officially a alternate delegate for the town of Indian Trail. But again, just be careful what you say and how you say it. It's getting up. Stop the finger pointing when that's enough. Thank you.
I can't read the signature. Is it Jane or?
Joni.
Joni.
Yeah.
Joni May.
N-A-I-S-A.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And do you need my answer?
No.
Okay. I just want to stand up here and ask you guys to relook at that super highway you guys are putting in. I just have started a business and I'm in the Sun Valley Suites there off of Old Monroe Road. I have a lot of guests that come from Valentine here and their first complaint is Old Monroe Road. And I've been looking at how the road is gonna go. It's hard enough already to get in there into that shopping center and what you're doing and how you're doing it and where it could go makes it worse. Also, I have a lot of customers that come from Brandon Oaks over into that Sun Valley Suites. And the highway looks like it takes away the crossover to from Mustang over there. We can't cross over there anymore. You're gonna eliminate me and kill my business if I can't get people there. And it's hard enough to start a business in this little town where no one knows you yet. Also, doing U-turns, I don't know, I know all of you go down Monroe Road, I know you guys see people doing U-turns, it's really dangerous. And we need to relook at this road a little bit closer and take it off the stop signs and everything, I think is not a good idea. And not making it accessible for people to get into that shopping center is gonna hurt a lot of us here. And we're trying to build and so, easy flow in, easy flow out. Thank you.
My name is Cal Mase. I come here as a representative for the Brandon Oaks Board of Directors in regards to the Old Monroe widening. With the current plan by North Carolina Department of Transportation, Brandon Oaks Highway, or speaking Brandon Oaks Parkway when it comes into Old Monroe Road, will now be a right turn only, two lanes. And then when you travel down the road, you will have to make a U-turn. I don't know what they call those little hairpin turn things. And right now, Brandon Oaks has a little under 1,500 residents. 6,000 cars every single day use Brandon Oaks Parkway. 3,000 in the morning. Right now, with the light the way it is, cars back up 45 cars. Those cars will not fit in that U-turn lane that Department of Transportation is playing out putting there, which means they're gonna stick out into traffic. Accidents are gonna happen, people are gonna die. And prefer not to have my residents be one of those casualties. We'd be more than willing to give them additional lanes of our property so they can have two left-hand turn lanes, because they're keeping the stoplight there already. They're not getting rid of the stoplight, they're just forcing you to make a right-hand turn. Get two left-hand turn lanes and two right-hand turn lanes if that's what they're looking for. The second problem is, which my wife mentioned, was where Mustang Road crosses over into Sun Valley Shopping Center, next to McDonald's. Currently, they're forcing you to make a right-hand turn and again, one of those little button hook U-turn lanes, which unfortunately will end up in the front door of the building. Because the current plan shows no building there, the building that now sits there, which is Sun Valley Suites and I believe the dance theater. The U-turn lane is now gonna chew up the entire parking lot in front of that building and the outside edge of that is gonna be at the front door of the Dance Academy. Either way, you're forcing residents just to cross, just to make that U-turn. Again, U-turns are dangerous because you know, you're judging on being able to pull out in front of somebody, especially high-traffic areas. So, as a representative of Brandon Oaks Homewards Association, we do not approve or like the stated plans submitted by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Thank you for your time. And by the way, I know what it's like to be an unpaid board member, so thank you for your job.
Reverend Jones, I reside at 5102 Old Charlotte Highway, Monroe. I am opposed to the super streets. I do not think that will be a good idea for the U-turns. Go right to turn left. You're gonna have more accidents and fatalities and it's just not good for Indian Trail. I want to bring this to the attention because a lot of the town council do not know. Hayes Road and Old Charlotte Highway, the property there, 72 acres behind my residence, is joining where the new public is, that is for sale. There's three acres on the corner of Hayes Road that Walt Perry Real Estate is selling as commercial. Behind that three acres, there's five acres facing Hayes Road that is for sale. All the, these people, whatever is built down there on that corner below my residence and the 72 acres, all those people have no exit but to come out on Hayes Road. Eventually, there will need to be a stop sign at the intersection in Old Charlotte Highway. And you cannot put a bulb out close to a stop sign by the stoplights because of the DOT. That is something the town needs to think about in the future, about all these people. They cannot go behind publics and come out on West Chapel Stouts Road because that's somebody else's property. All this, whatever is built behind my residence, has got to come out and exit on Hayes Road. You're either gonna have to come out Hayes Road to Monroe, or you're gonna have to go on Old Monroe Road, excuse me, or you're gonna have to come out on the boulevard. And there's no stoplight there on the boulevard. In addition to that, Harkey Creek subdivision is gonna be built across from Barnett Grocery. There will be 188 townhomes, there will be 88 single-family homes, there'll be trails and parks, there will be no stoplight in front of Barnett's Grocery. There will be an east lane and a west lane to get into that subdivision. They started yesterday, bulldozing trees down. The construction of the streets and the houses is supposed to start January of 2018. There again, the traffic is gonna have an impact, impact on Indian Trail. The super streets, there's a lot of, you know, all the businesses at Sun Valley and Indian Trail are gonna, it's gonna be a negative impact on the businesses, it's gonna hurt. Just like Joni. Joni's a hairstylist, I've been to her before. The businesses are going to hurt. It just will not be a good idea. I attended the Stallings Council meeting last Monday night. Very good meeting. There was no drama, no drama in the meeting at all.
Ray Kellum.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a map held up. I think you're all familiar with it, but we were... My name is Ray Kellum. I live at 5125 Old Monroe Road. And at your last meeting, I'm afraid the takeaway was that the super street and the conventional four-lane road would not really require that much more right-of-way. But I think all of you know that the bulbs that we've talked about here will consume a lot of property. What you do not know maybe is that all of these bulbs limit access. In other words, and one of them as a matter of fact, let's see, here at the medical center basically eliminates any access to the CMC Medical Center. And so, here again, that's kind of another nail that I want y'all to see if we can pull out as we go forward. But anyway, that's all a part of the super street situation. We also think that this is a major burden to the residents of Indian Trail. In our case, our family's case, we have four points of limited access to the property and a mighty big burden. A lot of eggs are being cracked there. Understand that. For this and other reasons, we oppose the super street. The super street benefit basically only comes into play for about an hour and a half in the morning, maybe two hours in the afternoon. You know, if we look at the percentages there, like some of the percentages that were quoted to you last time, that's about 6% of a week's time, considering five days at these hours of time. So, for the other 94% of the time, residents are gonna be inconvenienced in having to make a right turn to make a left turn, when it's my experience and my observation that at these times, even the two-lane road handles the traffic. So, again, another burden on the residents and you can pretty well prove without anything you want to by percentages. And these percentages that you were left with were such that, we don't know the comparison as to what they were. But you folks represent us. Most of the people that are traveling this, maybe most of them, maybe not even big town residents, they hadn't contributed to the $10 million bond. We're going to. And what we want, what we ask of you is that you represent us and hear our concern. If I were a candidate for, okay, I would sure look at the plight of Brandon Oaks. Might be a lot to consider there. Thank you.
My name is Marywin.
It doesn't work.
All right, I'll speak loudly. I'll try to speak loud. My name is Marywin Rollator and I live at 525 Old Monroe Road. I spoke at the council meeting back in July and expressed my concern about the proposed super street on Old Monroe Road. I would like to reiterate those same concerns. The whole idea of a super street on this road is very disturbing to me, as I've heard echoed by other people as well. No one will ever be able to turn right, or excuse me, turn left again out of a driveway, neighborhood, or side street. Everyone will have to turn right to eventually turn left. Doing this will only be compounded by the super fast flow of traffic that the super design boasts. This adversely impacts every single resident on Old Monroe Road, those living in neighborhoods off of Old Monroe Road, and people who travel this road. Even on the Charlotte section of Old Monroe Road, 7th Street, where traffic flows the heaviest, there's only a four-lane highway and in some sections, just a three-lane road. Why can't we do the same in our residential community? I know it's already been pointed out, but Matthews was able to get the DOT to change their plans for the super street in their area. I hope to do the same for Indian Trail. With Indian Trail giving $10 million to this $30 million project, we have a big say in what type of road we have. No one will deny that something definitely needs to be done, but I'm convinced a super street is not the answer. Why would just widening the road to four lanes not be a valid option? Interestingly, this was what was originally presented before the town council, when they committed to funding the $10 million. Speaking of funding, who's gonna take care of all those wide medias? Is this DOT's responsibility or will it be added to the town's list of areas to maintain and vote weekly? We are in the process of rallying support in opposition to this super street. Since tonight was not on the original meeting schedule, we plan to have some things in place and lined up by the next town council meeting on September 12. I hope all of us, especially the council, can come together like Matthews and do what is best for our whole community. We don't need a major thoroughfare running through our residential community. That being said, we hope that you and our next elected council will be our voice. Thank you.
Brian, 14849 Old Monroe Road. If I may just point it out, that's our home. We're the second house on the left once you pass South Fork heading toward Sun Valley, pretty much directly across from Radio Drive. I come to thank you for your ears tonight and I come to plead up and say my home, because I'm one of the 20 residents that are slated to be eliminated with this project. Built this home 10 years ago, we built it and designed it to die there and be there the rest of our lives, living in the family, raising our son, and we would like to stay there. I need your help. So, in doing this, you know, we have the bulbs there. Engineer with NCDOT, I'm teaming formally, that with controlled access that Mr. Kellum has referred to earlier tonight, it removes my opportunity to have a driveway in front of my house, therefore I cannot live there. There is no interest on the project. And so, what I ask is you look at this plan, examine this plan, and make sure that it fits the residents of this community. You have an interesting blend of commercial and residential along this way. And I think there's opportunities to preserve the residential, excuse me, the footprint and the impact that this project will have on your residents here. You know, and I want to make sure that, you know, the promise that this is going to speed up traffic and it's gonna be, excuse me, much safer. But if you look at the environment assessment that was published, 57% of accidents that happen are rear-end accidents, only 11% are associated with left-hand turns, which this is supposed to stop left-hand turns. I'm sorry. I met a cold this week and it's killing me. So, let's make sure the project does what it says it's gonna do. If you look at Dr. Honig, NC State, a study that he published in 2011, which falls into the same time period that the traffic strategy was done. You know, he went through and looked at similar construction sites in North Carolina and from a safety standpoint, the rear-end accidents, which we have the most problem with, increased by 22%. So, let's make sure that what we do here addresses our problems that we do have. And right now, I don't see, I'm an engineer, but it doesn't make any sense to me. So, one last thing, please help me keep my house.
Sarah Carter.
Hello, my name is Sarah Carter. I'm a resident in Brandon Oaks community. I just want to thank you first for this opportunity to speak to and voice our concerns and our thanks. I would like to thank you for the proposal to widen Old Monroe Road, because I think the vast majority of us can agree that something needs to be done to help the flow of traffic. However, I would like to speak in opposition of the idea of eliminating left turns. And on the basis that as a Brandon Oaks resident, when we are trying to turn out of the community, the vast majority of people are turning left. If we're forced to turn right, as our spokesperson, Cal Mase, had said, there's gonna be a lot of backup congestion on the road and that it will defeat purpose. So, I don't want to pick up too much time, I just want to voice my concern and thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity.
David Cohn, 1019 Philly Drive, Indian Trail. Just one thing I wanted to ask Karen, and I don't know if Karen knows, and this just came up during the conversation. Is it still possible, and I don't know what we can put on the ballot or what we can't put on the ballot, but you definitely want to do what the residents of the town want. I've always believed in doing that. If the residents of the whole overwhelmingly do not want a super street, is it possible to... to put it on the ballot and have the people vote whether or not they want it on? And is it too late? And it may be too late, and that, I don't know if anybody can even answer that question or not.
The Old Monroe Road, this is going to be paid for with bond money, correct?
Begging pardon?
Is it going to be paid for with bond money?
Part of it.
Part of it, yeah.
I have not reviewed the bond language that was passed by the residents at the time, but I can review that. We can certainly look into it. The, if we are using bond funds, the bond funds will be committed to the Old Monroe project. I don't, again, I've got to have a look. We can check design and work with NCDOT on design. That's what we need to do, and that can go on at any time, but I do have a chance to do it with residents to vote. It just depends what the bond says and what they voted on the first time.
All right.
David, if I may, we do have, large projects like this do have environmental assessment. Most of the time, if we don't comply with that assessment, then that bring up questions whether the project is to take off or not. So, that's something we could revisit with North Carolina DOT. And I think from previous experience, in addition to that, maybe a big petition that a certain percentage of the property owners that on both sides of this roadway are out there to voice their opinion, that would help too. But mainly, if it's federally funded, that environmental assessment has a lot to do with whether the project is thorough or not.
Thank you. And I didn't know, and I know that we didn't have it on the agenda, so I wanted to ask that question legally. I just want to make a quick comment. If I speak over, I'll give about a minute to say something.
About 30 seconds.
Oh, 30, but they didn't want us to talk. Hey, I just wanted to quickly say that anytime that our friend in the bathroom comes up and says something bad about you, you must be doing something good. So, I feel really, really good about tonight and about being put down. But I never accused anybody of lying last week. I never said anybody lied. Ms. Howe's been showing up at the meetings, but I never said anybody lied. My tax increase, I don't remember that. I don't think. Try never to say that I don't think I've ever told a lie, that I don't think I've ever told a lie to the residents, and if I have, show me and I'll go by. But I want to listen to the people.
Hands up.
And I want to listen to you. Whatever you say, we'll do. Have a good night. Captain Cole. Is he on the consent agenda? I mean, is he on the public comments, or is he?
Oh, sorry. Let me close public comments.
Yeah, I just, last time, I didn't talk on public comments.
I like the consent agenda. That would keep y'all from being subjected here in the dollar. Adam's got a video on the safekeeping play real quick. Last meeting that we're at, Councilman Daniels asked a little bit of, permit me to bring back a little bit of information about some narcotic use and overdoses and the kind of tough side of the Narcan.